Hey, everybody. They're currently in executive session. I don't know how to turn this camera around, but anyways. They're currently in executive session. Hopefully, we'll be going back in here shortly. We just started the meeting. They went in and automatically went to executive session, so I'm not really sure what that means. Pray for us.
Thanks for business with. I've got money and my. Financial. Like they got.
Well, yeah, but still being that's our. And I mean, like, that should be our business, you know, anything financial going on in John Town.
Even though it's high, it's getting like all the make minutes.
Yeah.
Wasn't, it shouldn't make any.
I don't understand it.
We've been.
Can't trust any government.
When did Ronald Reagan just said, uh, never trust the government or the, or the, what was it?
Because when you, when they got hit, I had to do that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't trust no government, none.
I trust people in general, my friends.
Yeah.
Yeah, too much power.
Yeah, no.
Hey, everybody. I don't know how to turn the camera around, so. Alicia. Hey. We have a little crowd with this. We have.
You just tell your story. And that's what they're afraid of. They traded your story.
I just don't want to get up there and start stuttering.
It's okay.
I have a bad, oh, I just have a stuttering problem, especially.
I have a shaky body.
I do.
It's very nervous.
Yes.
Truth can't be, nobody goes one way.
I'm just, I'm gonna say my story, you know, I don't have no scientific facts or anything like.
And that's what they want to hear.
I love, I love that to me, but I'm trying to speak on mic, speaking out.
We good?
That's what they want to hear.
Yeah, they don't, they don't care.
We gonna make it?
It doesn't mean anything.
Oh, I know, I know.
All right. Let's do it. I'm originally from Ridgefield. Uh, parishioner.
Well, y'all, we're getting settled back in. Uh, sorry about the interruption, but we have a matter that we had to. We agree on a matter that is good for the city and it was, uh, it's one of those things that we take out in executive session. It will be made public soon, but at this point, uh, it's an industrial development side. But it's, it's good news proceeding. During executive session, we discussed that and no action was taken, we not taking action. Now we're back in open session and on the present, uh, on the presentation agenda. We, the first thing I'll do is to recognize Mayor B D for a proclamation proclaiming February the fourteenth, twenty twenty five as Arbor Day in the city. Arbor Day in the city, twenty twenty five.
Whereas trees are valuable and renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for building and furnishing our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, reduce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees in our cities increase property values and enhance the economic vitality of businesses and beautify our community. And the annual observance of Arbor Day throughout the nation and the world provides an opportunity to realize the importance of a tree care and appreciation and to recognize the contribution of such to a cleaner and healthier environment. Whereas the city of Law is proud of its streets, park, and home garden trees and the beauty they add to our community and as such has set aside February fourteenth, twenty twenty five as Arbor Day in the city of Law, Mississippi. Now therefore, I am going to be mayor of the city of Law and we, the Law City Council, do hereby proclaim February fourteenth, twenty twenty five as Arbor Day in the city and encourage all residents to recognize and quarters of trees and brightening and enhancing our lives. And I think the members of the tree board are here as well. We can come up and get a picture.
Daniel is over.
One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Trees. How are you? Get one.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're, we're.
Front face.
Yeah. One, two, three. One more step, okay? One, two, three.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We thank y'all for what you do. You do one thing, y'all, for the city. The city is a, Law City beautiful. We're a tree seed. We're proud of it and thank y'all for what you do.
For over fifty years, been a tree seed.
That's amazing. That is true.
First one in the state.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you.
The next time is the budget certification, we were privileged to be provided this information from our city clerk and it's very helpful, thank you for this information. And we've all had an opportunity to look at, has anyone had any comments or questions on the certification? If not, we'll go next to what we call our citizens forum. And at this time, we have some time set aside should anyone care to address the city council on a matter of public interest. And you can do so by being recognized and you have up to five minutes to discuss a matter of public interest. And if anyone wants to address city council, I will recognize them at this time. Who wants to go first? Okay, you can say, you can stand right there or if you like it, you go to the podium. You might rather spread yourself out.
Yes, yes, and I have, um, some things I'd like to pass out.
Sure.
This is concerning the cradle.
Mr. President.
Um, I'm sorry.
Well, you, of course, you have up to five minutes to speak and it's just, it's not meant for it to be addressed to the city council as a whole, not any individual member. And as matters pertaining to public interest and in which claim of public interest and the city has an interest.
So I'm asking you all this and bear with me. So council does, do I pass this out to you guys?
You may, you may.
This is, uh, as long as you want, Auburn, we've been fighting since two thousand, sharing.
Ma'am, could you please give your name?
Lisa Atchock. I'm from Ridgefield, Mississippi.
Okay, Alicia. Alicia Atchock from Ridgefield, Mississippi. And you'll have five minutes to speak on your matter.
And this is my family. This is my husband. And this is my family. I want y'all to see.
Okay.
I want you to see my husband. Bear with me. Hi, good people, the council. Hello, my name is Lisa Atchock. I'm forty-eight and I have been married to my high school sweetheart for twenty-six years. We have three beautiful children. I'm here today to tell my truth about peerless cradle. My story begins in two thousand and nine and I was diagnosed with a pre-cancerous grapefruit-sized tumor on my pancreas that they discovered while I was having multiple kidney stones. I was in severe pain and still had the worst, so pain pills became my best friend. Before long, I was hooked. One equal two, two equal three. I was, I ended up hopelessly addicted and spending every dime I made, to the point I about lost everything me and my husband had worked for. So after a few years, I tried to get off pills with Suboxone. Suboxone helped me to get off pain pills, but it came with its own heavy price. I had lots of bad side effects and my body was now hooked on Suboxone. I quit cold turkey, which almost killed me, said I'd never go back. But I did, and just three weeks later, I was spending all my money again on pills. I was hopelessly addicted and also suffered from serious depression. Meanwhile, my husband had discovered Kratom. He was looking for an alternative to pain pills because he suffers debilitating pain in his knees. He has significant damage to the cartilage and deterioration in both knees. He began taking Kratom about five years before me. He told me over and over that it would help him with my depression and addiction. I finally got sick of myself and I tried Kratom. I never looked back. God answered my prayer with this plant that helped break the chains in my addiction. Kratom helped me to be present in my children's lives. I'm not spending all our money on pills. My husband could work while being in pain twenty-four hours a day. I now pay our land taxes on time and I'm fixing a hair salon at my home. None of that was possible before Kratom. Kratom changed my life so much that I'm willing to tell total strangers I'm an addict. I never told a soul that I had a problem, not even myself. When those chains broke, I wanted to tell the whole world of this plan that Donnie can do. Nobody wants to be an addict and nobody wants to have chronic pain. God placed this plant to be a tool in those wars. Addiction is not a one-size-fits-all. What may work for one may not work for another, but this plant has helped millions just like me. It has helped so many with drained chronic pain. If you have ever had to watch your loved one suffer, you would understand how grateful you would when they find something that truly helps with the pain, God affecting their senses. So you see, a ban on Kratom would hurt my little family. Jesus intervened in my life with this plant. Satan has known my name my whole life, but has called me by my sin, but Jesus knew my sin and called me by my name. You all have the power and the privilege to help people. I pray that you have listened and read these testimonies and science on Kratom and that you make your decision based on what God in your heart tells you. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Ms. Atchock. We, we have heard your comments and thank you for bringing them to you. Does anyone else here to address the city council?
I also have something, some information I'd like to.
You left that out.
Can I? My name is Samantha Brewer.
Samantha Brewer?
Yes.
Samantha Brewer. Where are you from?
Uh, I'm currently living in Amory, Mississippi. I've lived all over Mississippi. But, um, I came here today also, um, to address the, the subject of Kratom. Criminalizing a naturally grown and harvested plant, Mitragana speciosa, commonly known as Kratom, is not the answer. The Kratom Consumer Protection Act, or KCBA, is a great outline for the regulation of Kratom products as it sets guidelines for age restrictions and also limits concentrations of seven O H, or seven O H. Raw leaf Kratom contains little to no seven O H. It is not only a lifesaver, but also provides quality of life for those who suffer from addiction, chronic pain, and mental health disorders such as depression and anxiety. Fifteen to twenty million Americans consume Kratom. More often than not, they do so responsibly and in moderation. This plan has given back the lives of countless individuals who before discovering Kratom were quite literally incapable of functioning day-to-day, much less as builders of society. My husband and I were opioid addicts for twenty years, even receiving treatment at methadone and Suboxone clinics, which only ever served to perpetuate our addictions and addictive behaviors, such as cravings and withdrawals when we routinely run out of our prescription medications. We finally went through a medical detox, which ultimately landed us back into the hands of a Suboxone clinic again. As we, as we lived below the poverty line and at the time had no line of dependents, we were not eligible for Medicaid and could not afford commercial health insurance. So our families came together and paid more than a thousand dollars every month for the two of us to remain on our Suboxone regimen. During that time, we both suffered a severe anhedonia among other mental health issues that were left untreated as we cannot, we could not afford both math and psychiatric treatment. Never mind that we were prohibited from long-standing medications that we desperately needed alongside the treatment of our addiction and dependency. At our lowest point, we lost every single possession we ever owned and found ourselves without a home, means of transportation, and well, and without the comforts that come with having our needs met. We were finally forced to detox from Suboxone cold turkey as we were unable to continue feeding the absurd cost of keeping us clean. We began using Kratom to manage our acute withdrawal syndrome as well as the lingering pause or post-acute withdrawal syndrome. It would likely would have continued for months, if not years, without something to mitigate any symptoms. Kratom allowed us to stop craving, to stop feeling sick every day. It gave us our lives back for the first time since we were teenagers. It gave us the quality of life we so desperately sought in all the wrong places and helped to manage not only our addiction recovery, but also our mental health in line on diagnosed issues with chronic pain. We've been sober for nearly three years now and I have no desire whatsoever to get high or to buy us the traps that the former have set up to profit off of my previous addiction. After losing our first child at seven months old due to complications from premature, in twenty fifteen, our addictions understandably got even more out of control. But in May of twenty twenty-two is when we broke the chain of pharmaceutical driven meth and turned to a more natural, less addictive, and less intoxicating alternative, Kratom. We now have a beautiful, healthy little boy who is eighteen months old and I genuinely believe that Kratom not only saved our lives, but allowed us the chance to be parents again. This time, I was able to successfully take her off Kratom as well as my mental health medications and my pregnancy was a hundred percent uncomplicated and I was able to carry full term. As a thirty-nine-year-old mother to a toddler, I can say with the utmost confidence, there are not me capable of being the present, attentive, and functional mother that I've become if I were still chained to the medical industry's version of addiction treatment. Responsible, respectable legislators, medical professionals, and pharmacology professionals with true integrity and the best interest of their constituents in mind should not blindly criminalize a natural remedy, but instead consider the evidence-based research and science as well as consumer testimonies and make informed decisions about this issue and any others regardless of the issue on the table. Thirteen states have already adopted KCPA bills and there have been no new statewide ban bills since twenty seventeen throughout the country. The American Kratom Association, or AKA, has done a phenomenal job advocating for and presenting the facts about this plant as well as creating the regulatory proposals that ensure the safety and protection of Kratom consumers rather than make those individuals criminals for buying or possession of improper supplement. Please do your due diligence and handle with consumers and individuals in need of this miracle plant instead of hastily voting for or supporting ban bills that will inevitably do some, you know, more harm to the group.
Samantha Brewer, thank you for coming.
Uh, I'm from, currently living in Mississippi.
Your comments have been received. Thank you for coming. Thank you. My, would you like to address the council?
Yes, sir. My name is Robert Paternostro. I'm a Gales County resident. I live in Sandersville.
Okay, uh, say your name again.
Robert Paternostro.
Robert Paternostro.
Yes, sir. P A T E R N O S T R O.
Thank you.
I'm a taxpayer, homeowner, Gales County. Back when I was a teenager, I was hit by a pickup truck riding my bike to work. It caused me to hurt really bad, uh, throughout my teenage years. I powered through it until I was around twenty-three. I was living in Baton Rouge at the time and I decided to go see a surgeon to see if I may be getting my rotator fixed. Well, he referred me to pain management. The doctor started giving me an insane amount of meds, hundred fifty Dilaudid, forty opiva, cancer patient medicine. And so needless to say, it didn't take me long to start spiraling. After my surgery, he took me off, off, and started giving me Suboxone, but by that time, it was too late. I ended up moving to Maryland with a friend of mine for a little while. I had a small battle with heroin. Ended up getting on methadone for about a year. I ended up deciding I was tired of being trapped, so I came back home to Mississippi. I quit a hundred and ten milligrams of methadone a day, which was a nightmare. I was off for a little while. I was so bad at night. My body was just soaked right off from the high dust of methadone and, and the opiate use for, for so long. One day, I found Kratom and I felt like it fully gave me my life back. No residual withdrawals from methadone and my pain was finally tolerated. Um, I wanted to touch on something else. The, you know, I, I did the math on the seven O H. The seven O H tab that they're selling in the smoke shop are synthetic. They have figured out how to, how to synthesize stuff somehow. And the tabs have twenty to thirty milligrams per tab. A twenty-ounce bag, which is five hundred sixty grams of Kratom, has about two hundred fifty-five milligrams of seven O H. So it has trace amounts, you know, throughout the bag, about three hundred fifty micrograms per seven, per gram. Uh, so basically, ten to twelve of those tablets that they're selling, over the counter with seven O H, have the amount that that big bag has. And they are really bad and we have our full support, man, that needs to be off the shelves, you know, but I just ask that you please don't ban the plant, you know, because it'll hurt a lot of people.
Thank you for those comments. Those are very fast to run. Your comments have been heard and received. Does anyone else here? Yes, sir. Would you like to give us your full name and address?
Yes, sir. My name is Ken Patel and I'm a resident of Law who lives in Ward One. And I represent convenience stores. I operate one and there are some other convenience store owners also over here. And we have, we sell Kratom at our stores. We sell beer, we sell tobacco, we sell liquor, we sell. And this Kratom is one of the items which was introduced four, five years ago locally in city of Law. Um, I don't know whether the council has seen, Kratom comes in three formats, liquid, it comes in a powder, and it comes in a capsule. And it has got different strengths. And on the bottles, it always says feel good. So my point is that when we sell beer to consumers or customers, customers buy beer, you know, just to relax themselves from the day's activity, go home, have a couple of beers, and, you know, call it a day, just like liquor and so forth, you know, so. Point is that ultimately, this helps the customers who are buying there. We have only ten percent of the customers, though we offer it, but whoever is in pain, they inquire about this stuff and buy their stuff. Ninety percent of the people do not pay attention to what we carry. So this is only addressed to the people who have suffering of the pain and they cannot get other kind of medicines from doctors or whatever. And this item, Kratom, should not be compared with a drug. It is made out of natural ingredients like marts, you know, roots, and herbal medicines, which is zero percent alcohol. And it works, you know, like city of Law has passed that we sell now medical marijuana. So street marijuana or medical marijuana has the same effect of relaxing people when they consume the item, just like tobacco, beer, or people get on their nerves and they smoke a cigarette. So these are the things which, so we are responsible vendors who comply with the law by selling it to only people who are twenty-one older. And we have federal agency, we have state agency, we have city of Law, who does thank you time, random checking, to make sure that we are selling it to only adult consumers and we abide by the law. So it is not that we sell it to any individual, but individual has it and we sell it to them. And to me, council should think about that if they ban Kratom in city of Law, they can go to Calmone and buy it. So we are going to lose tax dollars what we are generating right now. And if county does it, then they can go to Hattiesburg or other cities to buy it. So my request is that if there's a state ban, then yes, it makes sense, otherwise, right now, city should reconsider till state completely ban, then it could be fair to all the vendors, like us, that we don't sell it and they can get it from some of the people. Where city is going to lose tax dollars and also, this, this item is for sale. Even the major beer distributors like Stok or Budweiser, they have a distribution ship of selling Kratom. So Kratom is something I think it is going to stay in one point upon the other. And it should not be construed with a drug. This is, and like cigarette, tobacco, alcohol, we know that no beer, like people buy a suitcase of beer, but they have to make their own judgment, how many to consume. If they consume more, they end up either in a roadblock, go to the judge or whatever. So once person has been twenty-one and over, it should be their decision what to be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica Patel. Your county is a vendor city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else here to address the city council?
I am.
Yes, ma'am. Leave us your name and address.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Paternostro and I live in Sandersville, Mississippi. I want to start by telling you a little bit about myself and how the Kratom plant has helped me. I'm not saying Kratom is a cure that would be very irresponsible of me, but I am going to say how it absolutely has helped me in many, in many ways. I suffer with PTSD, severe anxiety, which also makes me have strong seizures, migraines, and I have arthritis in my hip, neck, and back for many years playing sports and breaking, breaking my neck and back when I was younger. I went from taking strong pain medication, multiple antidepressants, and anxiety medication, and migraine medicine daily, and I still suffer with my mental health and seizures and also was in constant pain and it seemed like nothing helped until I started taking the Kratom plant. Kratom has helped me better than any medication I took, obviously. I'm not cured, but I can honestly say I'm in constant pain all day. I'm no longer having two to three seizures a month. And I'm not a zombie anymore. I have lots of energy and I'm happy and was finally able to start the career I've always wanted. I am now a better wife and mother for my family and my husband. No longer worries about going to work and leaving me in fear of him not being around during a seizure. I started taking the Kratom plant after reading other people's experiences and how it has helped them get their lives back, whether it's from trying to get clean off drugs or trying to find natural things to help them with whatever problems they may have. Kratom is not new to the world. It's been around since the nineteenth century and has been a herbal medicine for many years in Asia. But where I'm getting it at is your problem is not with kratom plants, your problem is with synthetic products. Me along with others are asking you to not ban raw kratom just based off misinformation because there's a lot of it when it comes to kratom. You will have the kratom community's full support taking synthetic products off the shelf because that is what's hurting people. Us here today are just wanting to keep the plant and nothing else. This is all we ask of you today is leave the plant alone. It's a shame that so many other things that are sold, kratom is the only one that is un- under attack for being dangerous to people and that couldn't be further from the truth. Just take me and my husband for example. We are hardworking, taxpaying members of the community. All we want in life is to raise our family and help our community. I just hope y'all will understand and listen to us when we say that we will continue fighting for our right to continue using herbal medicine to help us do our day-to-day life, to, for our day-to-day lives. And no, I'm not saying kratom is a need because it's not. You don't need anything to get you through your day to life, to live. It is just a, just a wa- a way better outcome than being on multiple different pharmaceutical drugs. I'd rather take something natural to help me with my well-being and I hate that right is being questioned over lies and misinformation. Out of everything you have heard today, I really hope you stop and think about the people this ban will hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Catherine O'Neal, the county of New York City. We have time for one more. Anyone else here to address the city? Yes, ma'am. This will be the last one.
I know. Thank you. I have no, Sherry, um, oh, shout out here. I didn't make it work because of stuff I had.
Yeah, that's okay.
This was made the day before I started kratom. Actually, this was with his dad.
Okay. You can let yourself come over and collect anything you like.
Sherry, I would, I would give you hot when she is.
What is your address?
I live in Monroe County. My, um, my tenant on here, but this is actual kratom range. I don't know if y'all actually ever seen a kratom range. I'm true. I'm true. That's my kratom range. This is what y'all trying to ban. This is God's gift. My granny told me if God give you a safety plan, it's my hot and true. I'm true.
Is, is it Owens?
Owens. I have you, I have she is. Sherry Owens.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sixty-one. I am from Monroe County and just overnight, um, my county was banned. Just my county. I could go to town about, but I come back home and I was a criminal in my home because I had kratom. Anyway, it took me thirteen months to fight that ban and we're the only county in Mississippi that has stood up and fought the ban and that agrees with me, that rather than take kratom, then take pain pills and drop them out of the town. Anyway, this is my testimony. Um, sixty-one years old, my mother and proud grandmother. Um, I was diagnosed with scoliosis when I was nine, so I've always pretty much had pain in my back, it's in the top of my back. When I was twenty-three, pregnant with my daughter, I was in a bad car accident. We went off a bridge, landed on the side and I've got terrible nerve damage all over the top of my back. I've had several surgeries and just, it is what it is. Um, it, it's never gonna be any better. Um, I'm, I'm gonna push you down to about the twenty-ten. I was on twenty different, twenty-six different medications. Um, in twenty-ten, my husband was diagnosed with Parkinson's, fifty. Six months later, my daddy had a stroke on his only child and so I had to take care of both of them. The same month, my daddy had a stroke, my doctor told me, he had to cut my pain medication. He cut it by eighty-five percent. He cut my thigh and all and right at that time, I needed my medicines and, and nothing else. I had to do everything for the extreme effect depending on me for everything. So anyway, my doctor suggested that I drank wine after it. I've never been drinking. My daddy was alcoholic when I was a child and I just really never liked alcohol. So I started drinking and that led to more drinking and it did help my pain. I got my whole bit of pain medication, but it would run out because, like I said, it cut me eighty percent of my pain medicines, which was cut for my whole life. My pain didn't go away, but anyway, I drank, it turned into vodka. So I started drinking vodka every day. I was kind of one of those secret drinkers. Most nobody knew I was drinking. Um, even my husband's doctors and stuff, they were just shocked when I finally told them I was drinking. But I was drinking a fifth or better a day of vodka. I did this for seven years, taking care of my husband and my daddy. With vodka, my daddy kept having stroke, so he, I had to end up putting him in a nursing home and that, but I didn't have much because I felt like a fella. And put the baby. About two months after that, my husband fell out of the door and in fact, he was septic. I got him in the hospital and they told me he wasn't going to make it up. I told them they weren't going to, they weren't going to tell me that it's going to attack my husband. Forty-five days later, he walked out of the hospital. He is so much better now. We've got everything pretty much under control and he can do so much more now. And he got out and I was still drinking. I couldn't quit, you know, I was, I've never had nothing to hold me like that. So he's gonna help me. So I went to rehab, but the thing is, when you get out, there's the vodka, there's the alcohol. By that time, they put liquor in my Walmart. It's there, you know. And I was sneaking, I was drinking and got these friends that were bringing, you know, I was getting it. So I went to rehab like three or four times during the year and I'd get clean and I'd come back out. They put me on out of van. I couldn't sound it. I could ac- I was actually talking to people in my house that weren't there and that's something that's messing up. Anyway, in December, my husband was reading about kratom, he got proud of it. He said, I'm gonna order you some of this. They said this will help your pain. He was struggling, trying his best to get me back. He loves me. So he got me kratom. The day of Christmas, it came in twenty-seventeen. I said, that's not gonna help me, it's just a treat. So I took it. Within thirty minutes, my pain was gone. I had never, since August, I've never had nothing to dissolve my pain away like that dead. And I wasn't hot. Well, later on, I was thinking, you know, I'm gonna have to have that drink. It's coming, it's coming. That urge went away. I've never drank another drop since. That was the end of my drinking. That was the day, y'all see that picture, why I look like? Here I am, this one, this much later, and guys who had them say things, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Daxin, we have one more person with us. Come, she's, please speak.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give us your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Brenda Maxton and I live in Bambly, Mississippi.
Where in Mississippi?
Bambly. It's, it's close to Houston, Mississippi.
Okay.
In a little spot in the road.
County?
Chickasaw.
What was your last name?
St. Bay. M C V A Y. And I'm here on behalf of my sister, Sherry Owens. On behalf of all these here today, she's heard, millions more just like them. But this plant, this purely kratom, is helping, helping them in their life. I'm now Sherry, practically, y'all know her. We went together in Houston. And I know her struggles. She's a pure, good-hearted person and her, she fought tears with a big pantry, doing what she can to help others on her job. Everything that these people have said, that she says, are true. She's been to doctors prescribing addictive pain medications and you heard all these other stories tonight, and what they're trying to do is get off addicted, get off addictive pharmaceuticals. And kratom, purely kratom ones that are out there to go. God's creation, he gets. He gets. There are so many pharmaceuticals out there, much, much dangerous, so dangerous, so harmful, in fact, that the statin drugs, that they have, um, found studies now showing that they cause Alzheimer's and dementia. And have discovered, thank you, and proven journal medicine that the, they, they lowered the goalpost in the risk levels so they can prescribe more statin drugs. While risking the life, the humanity of people. There are so many drugs out there. Um, if you watch TV, you see them across the screen, every commercial, there's one of them. Chemoz is a heart medication. The side effects is causing heart failure of this taking this medication. Serious condition leads to death, it says on the TV screen. Cause serious infection, leg swelling, rapid weight gain, and it says, please seek your doctor if you experiencing these symptoms. Ozempic, speaking of weight loss, causing destruction and tearing down the stomach lining, subject infection, stomach infections, nausea, vomiting, parasitic infection, flu, destroyed tissue, and all approved by the federal, by the Food and Drug Administration. Do you see about the federal, the Food and Drug Administration won't approve kratom because it works? It works. It's a, it's a healthy alternative to fight their chronic pain. Kratom is a purely provides relief for so many cry, pain sufferers, and it's a healthier alternative. And you want to ban it. Right now, I'm gonna share with you a little of my testimony and what natural herbs can do for a person, a natural alternative. I will share God's creation. Has, I will share with you what God's creation has done for me and praise God for my journey. Since I breast cancer survivor, diagnosed in '07, I have been up and down taking pharmaceuticals for many of my symptoms, one after another. I've had many surgeries due to, to result of chemicals. Now, for the past two years, I am pharmaceutical free. I have used only plants and herbs for my healing. Your answer is not found in pharmaceuticals. Your answer is found in the creation of what God has made. And you will find these in the word of God. God created all herbs and plants and trees for our, for us. He created these miracle plants for us, for all of us. And I pray that he will do the right thing today. Thank you, God.
Thank you very much, Mr. Daxin. The comments have been heard and received.
Mr. President, I'd like the indulgence of the council to speak on the citizens' forum.
At this time, I recognize Councilor Caper to speak on the citizens' forum as the sun citizen. Mr. Caper, you have my minutes.
Oh, yeah. I'll do briefs, sir. Uh, yes, sir. Mr. President and Counselor, I just wanted to take a moment and speak out tonight since I sponsored this, uh, this ordinance. And I'd like to say that all of the drug court directors in the state of Mississippi see countless people struggling with addiction every year. Lots of people have their individual story, but drug court directors don't know an individual story. They know the whole community and the whole county's story. And by dealing with all these countless cases of addiction, they overwhelmingly support the complete and total ban of kratom in the state of Mississippi. The circuit court judges in the state of Mississippi deal with the results of addiction and the crimes that go along with addiction, and that's not a single person's story. That's the story of an entire community, a city, a county, and an entire state. And the overwhelming majority of circuit court judges in the state of Mississippi are supporting and pushing for a ban in the state of Mississippi. Our drug court director, Ms. Consuela Wally, has been recognized with the Chief Justice Award. She is widely acknowledged as the best drug court director in the state of Mississippi. And she has, uh, been named to the State Advisory Panel for Drug Policy. Uh, that panel is recommending a statewide ban. And, uh, I'm personally have worked with people in addiction and coming out of addiction for more than fifteen years, and I know dozens of people that kratom was the cause of them relaxing and going back to where they came from. And I've ne- never met a single person personally in all those years of working with people in addiction in our community that kratom helped in any of, any way other than to keep them addicted, to keep them paying enormous amounts of money for a very small quantity of a product. And I'll just say that a young man, I'll, I'll just call him H, I won't name his family, but he overdosed and died from that product right here in Jones County. And I have grown man, his father, hugged me with his head on my shoulder and weep and heed and squall and cry in grief over his son. And he has told me how thrilled he is that the city of Laurel is leading the way in banning this dangerous substance. The South Central Director for their detox center have reported an increase in calls from parents seeking help for their underage children who have developed an addiction uh, to this product they can legally buy at vape shops and at gas stations in our city and in our county. And I have personally seen the product in the hands of twelve and thirteen-year-olds that they legally purchased at a store and they were high out of their minds. And I strongly encourage you to support the ban and I appreciate the fact that the board supervisors has indicated they're going to be banning it as well. And I'm also notified that it's going to come to the House in the state of Mississippi for a vote for a statewide ban as well. And so, thank you so much for your time tonight and I appreciate the opportunity to speak and to be heard.
Thank you, Councilman Caper. Uh, we appreciate your coming, saying, and receiving and heard. That, that concludes the citizens' forum and we exceeded the time set aside for that but it was necessary to get everybody a chance to speak. We, we thank y'all for coming and your comments have been received and heard. This time, uh, we'll move on to the policy agenda. The first item on the agenda is to adopt a resolution giving administration authority to approve the professional services contract for the Safe Streets and Roads Grant Program. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Next item is to consider adopting an order authorizing the repair of Waterwell Number Six and accepting the quotes from National Water Service for repairs.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing VAAD to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Jones County Board of Supervisors and James O'Garry Development.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider adopting a resolution to authorize and approve the execution of a lease purchase agreement for the two Peterbilt garbage trucks. of a lease purchase agreement for the two Peterbilt mortgage trusts that, that settled. We have a motion, second. Do you get that, Mr.?
I get it.
Oh, if there any discussion, not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. The next item is to consider approving the second reading of an ordinance of the City of Laurel prohibiting the use, purchase, possession, distribution, sale, or offering for sale of synthetic cocaine, other synthetic products, or kratom.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. The next item is to consider approving the second reading of an ordinance pending the holding place for Ward Seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider approving the second reading of an ordinance granting zoning change for the property located at twenty-seven oh-three Ellisville Boulevard, changing it from I-two to C-three, excuse me, C-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider adopting an order confirming the appointment of John Thaxton as Ward Two representative to the Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider adopting an order approving travel expense for the mayor to attend the Affordable Housing Conference in Biloxi.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider adopting an order to accept a bid for circles properties for the two pin numbers listed to be sold together.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider adopting an order authorizing the acceptance of a monetary donation to the purchase, to be used for the purchase of a K-9 officer for the Laurel Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing corrective action regarding the tax assessment on the demolition of the property at six-twenty Sandy Gallow.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. Consider adopting an order to approve the demolition assessments on the properties listed A through D.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. That completes the matters that we had set forth on the policy agenda. There's one item on the Route Ten Agenda and that's the claims document. What says it, Councilman, approving the Route Ten Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried. That complete, that concludes the matters that we have set before us for tonight. Baywood D. is out of need for another executive session. If not.
May I ask a question? So does that mean that kratom is now illegal in Laurel?
There'll be a thirty-day, uh, delay between now and the time it goes into effect. It'll go into effect in thirty hours. At the end of that thirty days, it's legal.
I hate y'all didn't listen to us, man.
We heard you.
But did you, brother? You know what I mean? Sorry, man. God bless you, sir.
God bless you, Ryan.
God bless you, pastor.
This is absolutely ridiculous.
It's terrible. Didn't hear a word we said.
No, they completely didn't.
Didn't hear a word we said.
They don't want to.
We was up there crying, almost crying.